Let the record reflect that I've taken role that all members of the Utility Board are here today with the exception of Mr. Eaton, having a forum, we will proceed. The minutes from the September the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting have been printed, posted, and circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There are no objections, and a minutes will stand approved as posted. We go into our agenda this afternoon under unfinished business, water quality testing. We continue to get excellent results, in my opinion. We have nothing that's out of line, and so our system is working excellent. So, any questions on water quality testing? All right, thank you. ARP discussion, I'm gonna ask if we take that off the off the, yeah, because we're not gonna get any more ARP money. With the stuff that's already allocated for, it's still in place, so we'll take care of, you know, the pumps and all that stuff. But I think we're done with that. The five-year plan, are there any additions or corrections to the five-year plan today? All right. Twelfth Street Lift Station Improvement Project, Mike?
It's installed, started up, or done.
I did not notice, did they take their bypass pump out?
I haven't been over to pick one up.
Yeah, I didn't notice either. I noticed they had it in there because they were concerned, but we haven't had any severe rains or any high flow or anything, so we should be good. Are you gonna do a final check out on that, or?
I haven't talked to Craig, but I can go over, we have people over there for the startup, we can, I can go over.
Okay, I mean, we'll need, we'll need somebody to sign off on it before we pay him.
Sure.
So, all right. Okay, the water and wastewater system improvement projects?
Um, I suppose I didn't get this out. I met with Craig and went over. This is from our last meeting. We talked about what a Phase One project would look like, so we began discussions with Michael Griffith at this group, start looking at rates. So, the cover here, I just put together an overall sheet that summarizes everything that's behind it. So, what I looked at is, you know, the things to me that would be important to the board. What I said is, if we started today, we would go to IGEC, and they would issue a funding recommendation in March. We wouldn't open bids for about a year. Then the loan closing, that's really where the numbers start coming in. That would not be till May, and this is for both, I just did water and wastewater the same. It's gonna take a little longer to do the wastewater than water, but, you know, you're not talking about a payment until January of twenty twenty-seven. Be the first time you'd have a payment due. Now, the costs, I broke it in two different ones, one's a reconstruction and then the construction loan. So, all the costs before, I just put those out there because you'd have to figure out how you would fund that piece of it. This would, you could, you could put it into the final construction loan, but you would have to have some way to pay it as you went forward. That would be, you know, the engineering, the legal, purchase property, accounting, those kinds of things.
So, that's a guess?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And, you know, hopefully, we wouldn't have to purchase any property, so, you know. Theoretically, theoretically, it could be lower than that.
Yes, yes. And so, that's the reason I broke it down into each one of those and running contract, you know, we don't have to do that, but and I should say also, I didn't do anything with cost as far as you know what's cost have been doing recently. I didn't put any kind of increase in there, that would be numbers for today, so we really wanted to look at the future, and I figured Michael would look at that anyway. You know, you could up that, you know, since it's still, you know, a year and a half away. That's how we would bid. And then I looked at Phase Two also. That was something that Craig really wanted to do is, if we're gonna look at rates, is why not look at projects that we know? What I did is tried to keep the next phase, you know, we wouldn't go to a next phase until we at least had the bid opening, so that way we would know the real numbers, what the Phase One project would look like. And for it, you know, the water for the second phase is a lot smaller than wastewater, so that's the reason, if you look, payments wouldn't start on the water till January twenty twenty-eight. The wastewater would have another six months, so it would be July, and what it is, it's six months past file payment, and then they do it January or July. So, this is the cover sheet, which, you know, is just the overall, and if you wanted to go into each piece, you know, I did you know, I kind of broke out a schedule of how it would look, you know, for each phase, again, I tried to keep real dates because, you know, you start getting, especially the holidays, you, we lose a lot. So, I tried to do as close as I could to real dates, just to give us a idea of when things could happen. Again, just to, you know, for the water projects, the first phase would be the small diameter water main improvements. And the second phase would be the Wells Nine and Ten Rehab, Twentieth Street Booster Station Rehab, and the Water Main Reinforcements.
So, I'm just taking my calculator here, just looking at this, okay, let's take Phase One underwater. So, if you add the two of them together, it's approximately three point six million dollars.
Yeah.
All right. So, if you take three point six million dollars, and the city of Vienna has five thousand two hundred and sixteen water customers, okay? So, if you take three point six million and divide it by fifty-two sixteen, that means that each individual water account customer would be paying six hundred and ninety dollars. That's, if everybody contributed their equal share, it would be six hundred and ninety dollars. And so, in order to fund this with a rate increase, you would spread that six hundred and ninety dollars over, you know.
Yeah, standard, standard term would be twenty years, so.
Right.
Yeah.
It would be almost nothing.
Right.
I mean, it really legitimately would be almost nothing in order to do that. And so, if you take the numbers that are here, and it's sixteen million dollars in round numbers, okay? So, let's just say it's four times. So, every, every customer in the city of Vienna would end up paying twenty-eight hundred dollars. Six ninety times four, twenty-eight hundred dollars, over twenty years. All right, there again, it's almost nothing. All right?
And that's no grant or anything else added into that, you know, if you had, you know, it would just lower it, any grant money that would come in, so.
Well, I went to a mayor's meeting last night in Elizabeth, and they have done, I believe, eighteen million dollars worth of water sewer improvements in the little town of Elizabeth. Nine million dollars of it was for grants, they were non, you didn't have to pay them back. Nine million dollars is what they've got, okay? Now, nine million dollars is a huge amount of money for the small population that Elizabeth has, however, they got it done somehow, I don't know how, but they did. So, I, you know, I, I think that legitimately, we probably should start making a defined effort to get this done, and if you can't do sixteen million, then take half of it. Ten million, whatever, because the numbers are there, I mean, it's not a huge increase to anyone. And the longer we wait, the more expensive it gets.
Right.
And it's not gonna go away. Now, the wastewater part of it, the big number that's right there, you know, is the trunk line to Parkersburg.
Yeah.
Which we're still waiting on funding for it, and who knows what's gonna happen? You know, Senator Manson's leaving now, they may say, okay, here's a goodbye present to you and sign off on every one of them, we don't know. Okay, so, but if you take the other ones, you know, the three point six, the one with the two million, you know, and then over here, the four point seven, I still think that ten million dollars should be a target number for us. Gordon?
Yeah.
Ten million?
Yep.
I mean, honest to goodness, it's, it's one of those things where people, and it's our job, I'll give you that, it's our job to explain to them, look, this is what this rate increase is for, this is how much it's actually going to cost you, so that you don't get hammered because you're wasting money or, you know, doing whatever. This is not frills, okay, this is necessities, if you don't improve these things, you know, it's just not gonna get any better. Okay? So, the three numbers, Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Two under the wastewater. We can take those numbers back, and we can get to Michael Griffith and tell, tell them this is the target number, and we want numbers. Okay?
So, that's everything on here?
No, it's not.
Okay, 'cause what are we leaving out?
The trunk line to Parkersburg.
Because of the potential earmark that we're gonna get? I mean, I know they've said we've, we're gonna get it, it's just a matter of them.
Gotta go through appropriations, because until somebody cuts a check, it's still, you know.
Okay.
All right, I'm using round numbers.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, we'll, we'll figure it out to the dollar range, you will. Okay, but, anyway. If that's okay with the board, I'm gonna go ahead and pursue that, we'll get numbers, we'll get some projections, and, you know. I don't know. I, I think honestly, if we, if we had the option to do a slight rate increase now, to work its way into that, but I'm not sure how the rules go, Mike, I don't know if you have to have the projects. I mean, you can't just raise rates because you wanna raise rates, you gotta have a reason.
And, and Michael will be able to, I mean, he'll help you get through that.
And so, let's see what the numbers turn out.
Sure. And you want me to send this to Michael? Is that the easiest way to?
That would be the update, I can't remember that lady's name that worked for him.
Dixie?
Dixie, yeah. Anyway, Dixie's the one that's been working with this, and our audit's done now, so we have all those numbers, and our PSC report's done, so we have all that done. Okay, so, we're gonna take the funding, Phase One for water, and Phase Two water, and then the wastewater, Phase Two. And then we'll come back with numbers, and then we'll have a better idea of what we stand. Okay? So, Mike, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah. Yeah, the only other thing I, I just wanted to go through again, and Mayor's hit on it some, is just the, you know, the, the order of the projects, the Phase One was the force main to Parkersburg, and then the improvements upstream of the Twelfth Street station, which would be along Eleventh Avenue and Twelfth Street. That was Phase One. Phase Two would be the sewer rehabilitation, and that's areas that the city has already determined have bad sewers in them, and then also Woodland Heights. So, that kind of gives you what, what the projects are.
Okay, questions for Mike? All right. So, the dredging of pond run and dry dams, I have nothing on that. I'm sorry, Craig doesn't, he didn't leave any update for me on that, so I don't know the answer to that. The Twenty-Eighth Street Storm Grainage Improvements, Phase One?
Just in a holding period on that until the funding, apply for funding when it comes, becomes available.
And it's not gonna come available till first quarter of twenty-four?
Right, it's either, sometimes they do in December, sometimes January.
Okay, but you're monitoring that, okay. All right. The lead service line inventory. Tommy, do you have an update for us on that?
Uh, we're still in a collection.
So, we finished the building permit side of it, so that should help with eliminating more of the numbers. I, I didn't notice, I didn't look at my bill. Did you ever put the note on the water bill about, please fill out the survey for lead? Okay, I didn't look, they take mine automatically, so I didn't look, but, all right. I've done announcements at the council meetings, Craig did the last one, and then yesterday, WTAP came up and did a interview, it was on last night's news, about the lead and copper surveys. So, I don't know what else we can do to get people to fill them out, I mean, I swear to goodness. Yeah, I mean, and I don't see anybody else doing it besides us, which surprises me. You know, but I don't care about anybody else, we just need to get it done, so. Yeah, so, anyway, I'm happy with that, we'll see what numbers we actually physically have to go out and inspect, but, you know, should be, should be a manageable number. Yeah, oh, I know. Yeah, there's nothing you can do about that. Okay, any questions or anything about the lead survey? All right. So, now we move on to new business this afternoon. The SCADA system, sealed bids for improvements for the water and sewer SCADA system improvements were opened on November the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at nine AM with the following results. Sitco Water turned in a bid of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. After careful review of the bid proposals, a recommendation for the Utility Board approval for the SCADA system improvements is Sitco Water in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. Funding for this project will be budgeted in the water fund from line item eighty dash three twenty-five dash zero zero zero, and from the sewer fund, line eighty-one, dash three three one, dash zero zero one. It will be a fifty-fifty split between the water and sewer accounts, and fortunately for us, we have the money. And so, if this is approved today, we can move ahead with this, we don't require any funding at all, so. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the sealed bid for the SCADA system improvements from Sitco Water in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Does that move?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and we approve the sealed bid from Sitco Water for one ninety-seven, six seventy-four. Is there any further discussion?
I'm just kind of relieved, this was less than I thought it was gonna be, I thought it was gonna be like over three.
Yeah.
So.
It was a good number. One thing I did wanna tell you, I've been watching my phone for it, is one of the questions, you know, from the time we sent stuff out to when we received bids, and if they had a lightning strike, and they took out some of the existing equipments. So, Craig had asked me whether it, their bid included rehab to Twentieth Street. So, and they have not answered me yet, they said they were gonna look into it, so that could be an extra, but still, you know, we're well well below, you know, the number that would.
There's nothing you can do about that stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got pieces of equipment all over town, we've got generators, we've got computers, we got phone systems. Even hit the emergency phones in the park, I mean, it, it's just it's ridiculous, so, anyway, we'll just have to deal with that, you know, if it is, it is.
Yeah, and I, I was hoping, you know, that we could add it, but we'll take care, if something comes up, we'll take care of it.
What do you think, Russ? Okay, great, thank you.
Good.
Any further discussion? All right, then I'll call for the question, all those in favor of the sealed bid from Sitco Water for one ninety-seven, six seventy-four for the SCADA system improvements, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Lori, if, I don't know what we do now. Craig, we need to, we need to notify them so we can get it started, all right? The last item on our agenda for the new business is a pay adjustment. I have no notes or anything on that. I will say that Craig came to council and made a presentation about raising all of the salaries in his departments, which are operating out of this. The only ones that come under our guidance are the water and sewer departments, and the stormwater department, street department, and all the rest of them that he has up here, come under the general fund, which doesn't apply. Craig is strongly making an argument because of some of the technical jobs that we have, the water and sewer operators, and some of the other skilled labor that we have, that salary is not competitive anymore. I can tell you from me, my perspective on this is, I agree with Craig, but I am not willing to take this up now. This is, this is not the time to go into a major budget upheaval. January, when we start working on the budget, that is the time for this to be addressed, but that is my feeling only. But, you know, I mean, the pay raise that he put forth was, was huge, and so, I just, you're not gonna, that number has to be dealt with at the budget. There's no way. Okay? And so, you know, Craig's not here to defend himself, because he would vigorously, but, you know, that's my feeling on it. If you all feel differently than I do, you know, I'll listen to anybody's discussion on that. It's just, you know, you're, you're talking about some serious dollars, and unfortunately, that's why they call it a balanced budget, it has to come from somewhere. So, when you take money out of this line item to give it to the salary line item, everything else goes up, all the, you know, social security, all the taxes and all that, and so, it's a, it's a very, it's a huge number for us. And the other thing is, and it doesn't have anything to do with the Utility Board, but the other thing is, I can tell you right now, every other department in the city is getting on the bandwagon. This is, this has just rippled right down through the city. It started with the police department, and it has just continued to roll, so I know it's something that we're going to have to deal with at budget time, but right now, for me, you know, we'll deal with it when January comes, you know. So.
Yeah, one, one thing, Mayor, if, if you have a number in mind, you know, again, if Michael's gonna be looking at rates, that would be a good time to get you know, numbers on that too, is to go ahead and give them that, so he's already got it figured in.
Yes. Yes. You know, and well, we'll, we'll determine what that is, okay? So, I'm not gonna tell you what that number is, okay, I'll tell Michael. And then we'll negotiate. So, anyway, I mean, we're very, very fortunate that we have very good, skilled, trained employees that you can't replace, you were at the same meeting I was at. The guy from Rural Water made it very clear, class one and class two water operators are just, you grow them, you can't find them, you have to make them. So, I know, just because I was there last night, that the town of Elizabeth has a senior at Elizabeth High School that is working for them now. When he graduates, he will join the water department, working towards his class one water operator's license. That's fantastic for them, it is. You know, if we could find a mentoring program to where Craig and, you know, would have high school students or even college students come in, hey, you don't have to be in school. We get people to come in and mentor them, to teach them this, it sets someone off for a very good career. You know, because that water license or sewer license is, is gold. There's not a city in the state of West Virginia that doesn't have that concern. So, you, you have to pay, say, pass a terrible test, and then have three years of on-site training, where you can even get certified.
Mayor, did they go to the Board of Education, Worth County, or to the high school to get this student involved?
I don't know how they did it, Joe.
Just curious.
I don't know, it's interesting that you would bring that up, because
Yeah.
and I, this is so bad. There is a list that Workforce West Virginia prepares every year of careers, where they wanna spend their money on training programs. So, I asked them, I said, look, I said, water and sewer operators are really a high-demand position right now, and there's nobody that's doing anything. I said, I'd like to see water and sewer operators get put on this training list, put the money in it. Well, you know what, he said, we got a lot more people out there applying to be nail techs than we do sewer operators. That was the end of the story, it never even made the list. Yes, sir, now you think about it, though, that's the truth, yeah, fingernail people, yes, sir. Absolutely, put training dollars in that, and we couldn't even get on the list. Have we?
Yes.
We personally have not, and I don't know about Rural Water, because Rural Water's the agency that's leading this new program that they're trying to get started, and they're working on two programs now, Russ, it's a training program, but you gotta find cities that are welcome, that are willing to mentor these trainees. You have to agree to take these guys into your, into your crew, and they'll pay, they'll pay for the salaries, but once they're done, you know, you might be able to hire them, or they'll go back to Grantsville or wherever they came from with their certificate, and, you know. or they'll go back to Grantsville or wherever they came from with their certificate and, you know?
I mean, that's go ahead. I would love to have guys that people wanting to think they don't know they exist, you know what I mean, they just take it granted, it's something that happens.
Somebody takes care of that somewhere, you know?
But they don't have any idea how you can stuff like that.
Yeah, that's W V U P.
And that does our high school. I went to the Fred Everly Tech. And I have a thousand and eighty hours of duty, I'm very proud. And it just, we have, we have young people that may not wanna go to college. Introduce them.
Yes. Absolutely. But, with that, you know, that's, that's the argument there, we, we've got. And unfortunately, there are a lot of our people that have been here for a long time that are aging out, that the retirement rolls in the next five years are gonna increase dramatically, we're gonna lose a lot of our senior, senior people that have a lot of knowledge, you know, they built the city.